Good morning. It's Monday, October twenty-second, nine AM. This is the Muscatine County Board of Supervisors. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First is to review the agenda.
Move to approve as presented.
Motion by Jeff, second by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes. Number three, receive comments from the public. Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward and address the board on an issue that is not currently on the agenda? Seeing no one come forward, we will move on to number four, discussion of possible action to approve claims dated October twenty-second, twenty eighteen, in the amount of nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-six cents.
We'll move.
Second.
Motion by Bob, second by Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes. Number five, discussion of possible decision on a request from Muscatine County Amateur Radio Emergency Service to park their mobile communications trailer in the Worceston Street lot owned by the county and to access county electricity with C. Scott Richardson. Morning Scott, would you like to step to the podium and address the board on this issue? State your name and address, please.
C. Scott Richardson, eleven oh nine First Avenue, Muscatine. And what we're asking is if we can park the, we used to man the coal mine security trailer that was the District Five E., named Lou to Haskett County. Since then, we've purchased our own trailer. It's a thirty-four foot travel trailer that we've converted into a mobile comm center. We do all the emergency communications for Salvation Army, American Red Cross, do the Skyward weather spotting program with the National Weather Service. And we just need a place to park it. That would be a good place. It's close in here in town. The only electricity we would need would be just enough to run the trickle charger that keeps the batteries up.
Okay. Any comments?
Well, I have. I want to know more about the trailer, not necessarily today, but it sounds exciting. I'd like to know more about what you purchased and what you have and how it can benefit the residents of the county. However, I'm not ready at this time as one individual on here to take on any situation like this and parking at that location because we're right in the middle of trying to decide what we're going to do with that property. And that'll be coming up before too long in one of our in-depth sessions. And until we decide whether we're even going to keep the property, I don't want to get in any, you know, any additional group parking anything there. Doesn't matter if they're ours or not. I just want to make sure that we're going to continue to have that property going forward. Probably want to do that.
Is there any chance that we could keep it there temporarily?
Well.
Until a decision was made?
Is it there now?
No.
So you have a place to keep it right now?
Yes, right now we're renting a spot for it.
Okay. Then I would want to see it moved there before we make the decision.
Yeah, I'd want to wait to, to see what we're dealing with.
Yeah, I agree. Well, I mean, in my mind, Washington Street's probably not long or I don't think we have great use for it long-term. So we'll see what, what our study comes back with here in the next few weeks. And I think we're slated for that in-depth on the twenty-ninth.
Monday, yep.
So we'll be discussing it then. So that's not long before us to make that decision. It would make sense to move something in there prior to that. See if we're able to kind of action that will entail.
All right. So with that, do we need to vote on this panel or just not?
No, I, I think I'm hearing more consensus that you're not willing to allow it at this time.
Not at this time.
Okay.
Well, I guess we don't have to take action on it, right? We could come back after the twenty-ninth and take action on it.
You can tell you what to further meeting or just?
Right. Yeah, and I would just suggest you can check in anytime, but it's one of those deals, don't call us, we'll call you because, because I don't think it's going to go as quick as you guys might think it's going to go. It's, it's kind of a, it could end up being a big issue, not you guys, the property, you know.
Oh, right.
Because we're going to be discussing all the properties that we've had some thought on and discussed about and, yeah, so.
Yeah, we're not even, we're not even sure how we're going to move forward with that property and how to utilize that. I don't believe at this point.
I believe you're using that as a polling place too, right, Muscatine?
Yep.
So that'll, you know, we'll be parking in the area. So, yeah, but all the things happening in the near term suggests it's probably leave things as is.
Okay. Very good.
Okay.
Thanks for coming, Scott. Item six is item of county engineer Keith White. First is project updates.
Morning.
Go on, Keith.
Well, on the Iron City box covert, they mostly finished up backfilling and we think Iowa Bridge will be done with their portion by the middle of the week. Then again, we've got the general work to follow by a subcontractor, which we don't schedule on that. G twenty-eight sub drains are done. They're working on, or they worked on curtain walls, resetting pipe that's outside of the roadway. And they should be close to finish this week. The big change, hire did get started Monday and the west major piece of the parking lot is gone. And we think two-thirds, three-fourths of the excavation for the base there is moved out of there too. And we had these slides, two, two on one eightieth, one on F seventy. And we're having higher waste or dirt at those sites and we're, we're placing it with our forces, which is a temporary fix for those, and hopefully we can design up something permanent for those situations this winter. Probably be adding them to our program. And Denko, who I mentioned last week, they did move in up in the Durant area and that, so we got about ten bridges that they're doing bridge deck patching on. And that's underway. I mentioned to Bob there earlier, we had a, a meeting with, just a brief meeting at their request with Luther and Holmes to talk about our plans on the project down there. That went well. So that project's pretty close to ready to go other than, you know, right away. And we did ask them if the appraiser contacted them and the answer was not, no, not yet. But we're thinking this week they'll probably be talking to them. I think we're complete on right-of-way purchasing except for the west side of one bridge. And I guess I already mentioned the slide repairs. Any questions?
Appreciate the update.
Okay.
All right, very good. Move on to B then, discussion of possible action authorizing a credit card with a five thousand dollar limit for the county engineer's office.
Yeah. As some, all, or none of you might know, I have always kind of resisted for twenty years of having a credit card. But we ran in and maybe it's time to change courses. We ran into the county engineers conference this year shifting to Des Moines and the hotel there, the conference hotel, will not direct bill. We will continue to direct bill anything we can, but you're now asking, you know, employees to put it on their personal credit cards because they, they won't hold a room without that either. So I think that, that's the driving reason for the request is situations where we can't get things direct billed.
And you feel that five thousand for an event like that's adequate?
Yeah, I, I talked with Nancy, one of his typical and other departments, and I think she said that one's very typical, but, you know, some higher. But I think that's, you know, more than adequate for anything I anticipated at this point.
Move to approve. Second. Motion by Bob, second by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes. Anything else, Keith?
That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. Number seven, discussion of possible action to approve the minutes of the October fifteen, twenty eighteen regular meeting. Second. Motion by Matt, second by Nathan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes. Correspondence, Bob?
Nothing.
Nothing? Nathan?
None.
I had nothing. Jeff? Matt?
Not sure.
Committee, committee reports, Matt?
Yeah, last Tuesday, I believe the sixteenth, yeah, five o'clock, we had M C J C C here. And from the agenda, it looked like it was going to be pretty uneventful. And then they kind of came at us asking for a million dollars to upgrade the shield wear system that they say that shield wear is not going to provide any more updates for. Now, kind of, I was just going to put vacuum on that here real quick. As of right now, the system works. They're saying there's some moves in it. You know, I'm just looking at this new, at this versus that P twenty-five system that we just put in. And I think we don't necessarily have a safety issue. We have a good working radio system. This is kind of for, and until, I don't know exactly what it's for. But until I do know exactly what it's for, I'm going to have a really hard time bonding for another million dollars. And Jeff might be able to.
Well, I think when we, when we went through the, when we went through the P twenty-five project, I think we were made aware that the CAD system, as they call it, will be the next problem. It's a, shield wear was a local Iowa company that did this. And it sounds like they're, they're not really keeping pace with technology and have no intention to. Sounds like maybe they're waning and they're, you know, some work. So there are other CAD programs, as they call them, that, that, these are for in-car communications. There, I know that when the P twenty-five came in, one of our challenges, and I've known this through magic, is that mapping doesn't work quite like it should. There's a, I think we have to go through an alternative process so that you can tell where cars are, where things, you know, locations, things like that and addresses. So I think it's got some shortcomings, but I think bottom line was, you know, I think the commission was pretty clear that, you know, we don't have any budget for this. So there was a, the ask was, you know, the, we gave, we asked Beverly to go ahead and write an RFP for a consultant because she felt she could do that in-house by herself with no additional cost. Her estimate for the, I think it was eight hundred and fifty thousand project was the estimate, and about a hundred and fifty of that was for a consultant to lead through this process. And so that might be something we consider in the next budget cycle or before, if we could, if we could find funding to do that, begin that, to see if it is even needed or necessary. I think we're getting, the user group, I think, is giving us mixed signals on this a little bit. And I, so I think we all have to sit down and find out what's the real deal.
Yeah, well, two things. Number one, Matt, you, if I understood you right, you had simulated, maybe there might be some type of answer to it or help to it from our current source on the radios.
Well, I want to, nobody's been able to give me a definite answer on that.
So we're going to investigate?
I think that goes back to Chairman Sowers' often, often used comment, let's separate the wants from the needs first. And then let's go forward with the needs.
Well, that's not uncommon to have situations like this develop where you've got a system, a related system that can help answer some of the problems or questions, if not all of them. You don't even realize what you have. You spend additional cash, so that's.
It's also another thing where I don't feel like right now what they presented presents a safety issue. And until there is, you know, sufficient evidence or, or information to support that, you know, I feel like they're coming to the well again, looking for, for money, free money. You know, they, they always think money's free money, you know, because if, if they're not letting for it or, or whatever, then it's free. Well, if not, then, you know, a million dollars is a lot of money.
Well, that's the other two sides of this. So the first one, you find out if, if it's necessary. It may end up not being short-term necessary, but long-term necessary where that way it could be planned for. And I know, I'm on the commission, we certainly appreciate the opportunity to plan for this on a futuristic expense. And then the other thing is you have to wonder whether there's potentially any grant money available for this type of thing. I don't know if there is or there isn't, but, you know, you got to ask a question. If you don't ask, you don't get. So.
I just, I kind of feel, and I don't know, you know, maybe Jeff knew what we hadn't talked about, I kind of felt blindsided with this. There was nothing on the agenda that said we're going to come to you and ask for a million dollars. There's call to order, approval of minutes, approval expenditures, old business, new business, introducing the emergency, new emergency manager, and then close. There's nothing in there that says, hey, we're going to.
Talk about the CAD system or a new CAD system.
Right, right, yeah.
So I think that, I think that there's a process we need to go through in this.
Absolutely.
And, and we can get started on it and, and try to get our act together before we start even asking for money.
It seems to me rather than lurching from huge expenditure to huge expenditure, these things should in theory be foreseeable as technology changes. Is, do we have any way of building up some kind of a reserve capital or we can?
Well, I think that was a, that was a, a question we've asked, I think, for, for a bit of time here. And I think it's time in this whole joint communication center, we need to start looking at capital. There's a lot of capital, you know, four and a half million dollars in capital we've put in to operate this thing. And so we need to, we need to understand what does that capital look like because it's all going to age and fatigue. And we're going to have to replace it over time. So we need to start planning for that as well. I think that's just an opportunity for the commissions and, and to get this, kind of get our act together and get our, get our manager in there thinking forward for us so that we don't get these, get big surprises a million dollars.
Because there's more, there's more potential expenditures in the future, big ones, than just that. One thing that nobody's even touching on anymore is the fact that I can legitimately see in the future in a different location. And if, if and when that time comes, you have to be ready. When I was on city council, we had troubles with that building and they took care of a lot of the mud jacking and so forth. But you also have structural soundness of the building. And then you have the separation of powers that may be necessary because they're looking at a city again, looking at maybe a different fire station and that changes. I mean, there are just so many things out in front of us that have to be thought of and put into the equation. So.
Well, it's all more reason we need to do these long-term planning cycles for us, which are very difficult.
Oh, absolutely.
Even if this is necessary, we determine, it's a lot easier to deal with this when you see it coming three, five, ten years down the road. And there's always going to be expenses like that. So that, that how long we're planning is necessary and everything.
Very good. Is that everything you had, Matt?
Uh, Wednesday morning, we had an extra interview with the state auditor. That was it.
Jeff?
Yeah, I had the audit meeting on Wednesday, had the MCC JC, MCJCC on Tuesday, and then on Thursday had a weekly meeting.
Okay. I had nothing. Nathan?
I also had the auditors meeting on Wednesday and a couple of things I want to say about that, some we do every year. Congratulations to the folks who run things for us. We got a clean bill of health once again, very complimentary comments from the auditors. And, you know, the folks we have do a terrific job and should be recognized for that. The other thing that's potentially concerning has nothing to do with us, but right now we contract our auditing services with the state auditor's office, which I think a lot of folks do. They, they provide it fairly cheaply, at least in comparison to private firms. Nancy, would you say it's probably double or triple if we had to go with a private auditing company? And there's some question as to whether, depending on the outcome of things in a couple of weeks, the state can continue to conduct audits. That's a, it's a legal gray area and that's not yet resolved. It's, I think, one of, the incumbent is, has appropriate qualifications. But the challenge, if I understand, is not CPA or an auditor or whatever's required. So that could potentially augur a massive cost increase in our, in our, in our auditing budget if that election turns out against the incumbent. So, you know, regardless of the politics of the thing, I like having costs fixed and knowing what we're going to pay and, and not tripling our costs.
Yeah, I, I think I'd point that most small municipalities use the state as well. So it'll have a pretty big ripple effect. You know, you don't know. I think there's been an ask for an opinion by the attorney general, but he's refusing to weigh in on it at this time. So we'll see.
Very good. Bob? Yeah, I would add to that as well that based on my years of experience dealing with these audits, two things. Number one, they do a great job doing it and they don't let you off the hook. If there's something going on, they fight it. And number two, as far as the county side of it goes, I used to correctly get involved with some of these because I felt it was necessary to go around to the different entities and review this. Rather than, we've, we've made progress in any areas that we were, that we, you know, had a shortfall and didn't do so good. We've done much, much better, the county in general, which, not just the audit, but I think all the elected officials, not just this board, but do a much, much better job with the audit. They're in a much better place to be rather than, it's just, those elected officials are doing a phenomenal job of organizational skills and detail. And that's what you got to have. And the shortcomings are minimal and we're glad we continue to work on those. So the other, other thing I had besides that was on Tuesday, the sixteenth, I had the Myos Stones Executive Board meeting. We were supposed to have Linda Miller from the state there at that meeting. She had to, she couldn't make it. So, but the rest of the meeting was just basic stuff. And we did get a good clean bill of health from the state. We're doing a good job. We've made, we've been denrobed in compliance and doing all the things that we need to do as the agency. And they're in the process now of coming up with a new NCO because they're short, supposed to be three and one pulled out, you know. So that's getting close to being finalized when we get this new NCO. We don't know who it's going to be yet. That was all we had on. All right, very good. Thank you. Number ten, received information from county employees. Is any bill you need to have a discussion?
I don't know, you need to, but I thought you might.
Let's have one. Yeah.
I just wanted to kind of give you an update on what I know and where we're at so far with the connection at the city. We are back online with the jail services, but we were notified over the weekend that they were taking off, are taking offline basically their remote connections. So right now our deputies do not have any access from their M D Ts and their squad cars. So we're working this morning, I've reached out this morning to find out from support what options we may have to come back in a different route. There are rules and regulations on those connections, so we have to work with the state to comply with some of those.
What caused that?
What caused them to make this decision?
Because we, you used to have connectivity, correct?
From the squad cars, yes.
Yeah.
But this is all related to what happened with the city last week, which they are currently working on that to get it resolved. To the best of my knowledge.
Maybe, maybe not everyone's aware of what happened.
Oh, I'm sorry. They were hit with some type of malware last week that took them down for a day or day and a half. I don't know if they're still working on taking care of that issue, but we tried to help them, or it's not that we tried. We assisted them on Wednesday to kind of see what we could do to help get them up to going. We assisted them on Wednesday to kind of see what we could do to help get them up to Des Moines. They are, I believe, possibly bringing in outside resources or whatever. That I can't speak, because that's stuff that they're working on internally. I believe that there's possibly an investigation being opened up, or has been opened up. But a lot of that was in the news last week.
Okay, so did, now you can help me a little bit, bring me up to speed. So it affected the sheriff's department, squad cars as well?
Well...
And if so, why?
Okay. Because of the way that everything is set up, and to the best of my knowledge, has to be set up. It impacted, what happened to them last week impacted our jail and our squad car connections. Wednesday morning at roughly 7:00 AM, I shut down the connection between the jail and the public safety building because of wanting to keep things from coming that way, our way. At the same time, due to some of these situations that were going on, the squad cars did not have access to services, because servers were either offline or in being repaired. This weekend, they took things offline. I'm assuming that they're in kind of an assessment mode at the moment, to where they can limit connections coming into their system, into their systems to help prevent this in the future, so this would be preventative steps. At this time, we do not know how long those units may be offline. So we have to have that access, because everything is stored at their facility. If they're not allowing internet connections coming in, other than the necessary, say, for them to do business, we can't get to those services. And there are regulations from the state and the federal government, I believe, that limits how we can access or what we need to access that, you know, say, if we had it on our network.
Do we have any idea what, did they figure out what the virus was or the malware?
That I do not know. I do not know what that might have been at this point.
Do we think we're vulnerable?
Do we think we're vulnerable? We've been working, we're reviewing all of our settings, we're making changes where necessary. We're trying to make long-term plans for larger changes. And that's what we've been working on basically since last Wednesday evening, once we finished up at the city. So we're doing what we can. We have tried to, over the past, minimize our exposure from the outside to the inside, so...
This is probably a discussion we should have a closed session. If in one, if we want to have a discussion.
Yeah, if we're going to get into some details. But, you know, anymore, it's really just a matter of time for any organization. There's, you know, you have the phishing, the spear phishing, you have just normal malware, you have drive-by websites, you have, you know, the potential for hacking, cracking.
Well, begs that, begs the question to me if all our public safety systems should be disconnected from the internet, should not rely on it. I know that's a task.
Again, that's, that's a bigger question than I can answer, because I haven't really been involved with a lot of the stuff that's housed at the, the public safety building. So...
This is something we need to have a discussion about today.
I guess we are trying to take the needed steps, helping sure that where we're at. I have some calls this week set up with support services for some of our software and hardware, just to have them take a look at what we're doing. Is there anything that we need to change or improve on? So, yeah, we're doing that. Since then, you know, we've been trying to work with the city so we can set up some long-term meetings and so forth, so that we can try to stay in communication about what each of us are doing, to see how we can help each other, as well as what we could maybe do to help some of the smaller entities that are involved with us, such as Weldon and Muslerdy. Those are some discussions that we have had. And, you know, once they get to a point, obviously, we can kind of pick that up and start going. We do have a department head meeting later this week, just to discuss some of the stuff that's going on, and some things that we're going to be doing, just to kind of help get us into a potentially better position. So just wanted to give you heads up on that. Are there any other questions?
Okay, I agree with Bob that, you know, we should have a first management discussion like this, where you can have a closed session.
And we've, we've already talked about doing that eventually, when he's more prepared, to have an in-depth discussion about where we're at and what we're doing specifically.
Okay.
All right. If there's anything else, please let me know. I'll reach out to you by phone or email.
Thank you. Number 11 is items with the administration office. First is discussion of direction regarding upcoming terms, expirations in various boards and commissions.
I'm just looking for some direction. Our typical rule has been, or practice has been, once an individual has served two full terms, then we open up those appointments. They're free to apply again, but we also ask for other applications. We have, at the end of the year, we, the historic preservation, we have two positions that are opening up, that, that, that are going to be vacant, or that are going to expire, and those individuals have already served at least two full terms. We have the same situation on the board of health. So I'm just looking for some direction from the board about all of the individuals whose terms are expiring are interested in being reappointed. Do you want me to open that up and advertise to see if there's any others that are interested?
How many total positions do we have right now?
Right now? Right this minute, we have a zoning commission opening and a veterans' affairs commission opening. Vacancies that the deadline to submit applications is this, this Thursday. The only other vacancy that I can think of is the board of supervisors has a vacant compensation board appointment.
Are these the ones that are coming up, positions we traditionally struggle to fill?
The, the historic preservation commission, that, that group has just been so active that typically, if we have others that express interest, we've, we've expanded...
We just filled one on that, right?
We did. And, and we, but a lot of times, if we have more people interested than we have openings, we've expanded that group, because they have so many things going on and they're so busy. And then the board of health, that one's kind of unique. We rarely get other people to apply for it, and the people that are on it, the two people whose terms are going to expire at the end of the year, one of them has been on there since 1997, and the other one has been on there since 2007. So they have a lot of experience and background there.
I guess I think if we've opened it up in the past, we need to continue to do so. And if they're wanting to have another term, then if we don't get any other applicants to review, then, then, you know.
That's kind of what we've done.
Or, or certainly, even if you do get other applicants, I mean, then, then you can make a decision based on, based on who you think best fits the opening.
Yeah, and some of these, I mean, these are more sought after, others, you want people to get an opportunity, that's the whole point of term limits.
Do we, do we have any gender balance issues at all right now?
The, on the veterans', the opening on the veterans' affairs commission, that's, that's, the deadline is this week. I think we need a female on that.
We've got two ladies on it now.
Right, and, but I, I think the opening that we have is, is for a female. Like, I believe that, so...
Roger's the one that moved away.
Right. Right, I think, I think, I think you're at two and two. Well, that's not right, you wouldn't be at two and two, because then we wouldn't have an issue there.
Right.
I'd have to look, but I, I believe that one, we're looking for a female. The zoning commission, we can do either, the other opening, we can do either for the compensation board, because that's a seven-member group, but each one of the elected officials that gets to a point one, and then you guys get to a point two. It's nearly impossible to uphold the, do the gender balance. The only thing the board can do in terms of the two you appoint, if you want gender balance there, then the opening that, that we have, you guys would need to appoint a male.
Well, now, you listed the historic preservation, the board of health, veterans' affairs, what was the other?
The zoning commission and historic preservation commission, those are the two that, or the zoning commission and the veterans' affairs commission, those are the two that the deadlines this Thursday for vacancies we have there. The ones I've been talking to you about, the historic preservation commission and the board of health, those are, those are terms that are done at the end of the year. I'm just looking for some direction, so, so if I'm, because I'm going to go out and advertise, I want to do that now. And I think what I'm hearing from you guys is that you want me to open it up and, and see who else is interested, and certainly encourage the existing applicants to apply again if they're interested in continuing to serve.
Eric, what's the meeting schedule for county assembly?
If there's a case, no more than once a month, generally, we have it first Friday.
Once a month, huh?
Except for usually, we do comprehensive appointments, that type of thing, but generally, it's at most, once a month.
Now, that, you're talking the, the commission, not the board of justice?
Right, which is zoning commission, it's the same scale generally, but at most.
Well, that makes me wonder, it's not one of them that's the liaison between the two. It's not, sometimes we have, we always used to have a commissioner that's also sat on board of justice.
You have a couple of those.
We do.
Some of the opening that we have right now.
It's not, okay. Well, it makes a difference when you try to recruit and tell somebody what their obligations are going to be. Goes from one meeting to two, right? Okay. Anything else, Nancy?
I don't have anything else.
If that's everything then, if there's nothing other to come before the board, meeting adjourned.